This is, this is the Monday, May 11th Planning Board meeting. It's 5:00 PM. And I'll take a roll call of Planning Board members. There's Brian Fraser. Say hello. Paul Caleri.
Hi.
Paul Grady.
Yeah, hi.
Hi, and did we have Glassmeyer?
Yeah, she was here. I don't know what happened to her.
Okay, well, we'll, we'll keep going then. The first item for discussion and vote involves the warrant article that needs to go to the selectmen with our recommendation and vote. Order to allow the harbor, Cohasset Harbor in developers to negotiate easements with the selectmen. There's a draft warrant and there's a couple of layout of what's proposed that have been sent. Has everybody seen those?
I haven't seen it.
Have not?
I don't think so. I don't remember though. I don't think so.
I can share my screen. Jen, if you could promote me to host so I can share my screen, I'll show it.
Lauren, Lauren, why don't you, why don't you give us a primer on the information that's available right now and how we got it?
Certainly. So to give some background, we had our, the Planning Board Special Counsel, Karis North, prepare this language. The language which I can also, okay, I'm a host. Let me share my screen. Great. Can you all see my screen now?
Yes.
Okay, great. So I'll bring this up, this diagram. So back to, we have language that was prepared by Special Counsel Karis North for the Planning Board. This is, we've had previous discussions with the board. This, the intent of this article is to authorize town meeting to allow the Board of Selectmen to negotiate easements on site of this, or you can see the diagram right now. We've discussed in the past that there is town infrastructure related to the tide gate that is on, below private property and as well as due to this jagged property line. The property owner here for their redevelopment of this site would be interested in accessing over town land. So with that, we've drafted this up. We have Jason Federico here from the Town Engineering Department who can speak more to our infrastructure. And we also have John Cavanagh on the line who prepared this plan for us.
Is Jason gonna give us a mile-high view on what's going on with the infrastructure down there?
Sure. So as you can see on Lauren's plan here, I just got this two minutes ago. I asked Mr. Cavanagh for it right before the meeting started. So if you look at the first jagged line coming in from the site, there's, we have a pipe in there that carries water from the James Brook at the other end, Lauren. Now, do you want to get me scare my screen?
Sure.
Easier.
Let me.
By the way, I can hear.
So this portion of the, of the, of the easement here, there's, there is a pipe here underground coming from the manhole in the street that carries the water from Jacob's Meadow. And then additionally, we have a fairly sizable structure here. And then the pipe continues out to the head wall of the tide gate. So we have a bunch of infrastructure here. And then there's additionally a manhole. This pipe also comes and carries the drainage from Elm Street through the property. And then out to an outfall in the harbor, in the seawall. So what we had recommended, and I believe Jessica John's recommending here, is abandoning this drain pipe here and tying it into the manhole that carries the remaining waters out to the tide gate. So that's, that's what we have right now for infrastructure out there.
Jason, it looks like there's three, like dotted lines. One goes from that structure and then there's two sets of dotted lines to the south. What are those?
I want to say there, there are three different pipes underground there. Fairly sizable, like want to say they're 60-inch or might be a 60 and a couple of smaller ones, but there's three different pipes that carry that flow through the parking lot.
Okay, and they all go through the tide gate?
Yes.
Okay.
So out here in the harbor, you'd have a structure that's the tide gate.
Okay, and just for everyone's edification, what's, the dark black line is the jagged property line?
Yes.
And the red is what's proposed as an easement to the town?
Yeah, I believe the only portion that we need is the lower part. I believe the upper part is for parking purposes from the owner to the town, but I can't speak to that just by.
And then what's shown in green is what's being requested for an easement from the town?
Yeah.
The dotted green on the right-hand side?
I'm gonna leave that to John to discuss because I'm not sure what the rest of the easements are for.
Okay. All right, that sounds good. John, can you just, can you just go through that for the Planning Board?
Sure.
You want to put your version back on the screen?
So I have the cursor now. So as you mentioned, Clark, the red is to benefit the town, to cover the existing Jamesburg culvert, the parking that sits on the private property today. And in turn, in green, we have essentially access to the building across the town property into the proposed building with two parking spaces to the left. We also have a small piece here because this is where the, that 24-inch pipe comes out of the seawall today. And so although this pipe will be being abandoned, that will run underneath the proposed ramp, there will be drainage that will remain from our property that will drain out into the seawall.
Okay, and does everyone see where that ramp is on the left-hand side? The, the property line goes through that ramp area diagonally. Okay, are there any questions for, for John or Jason about the diagram? So hearing none, then this is essentially what's, what's intended to be discussed. It, it's possible that the easements may shift around as time moves on and the selectmen get approved to, to negotiate with the developer. But my understanding is this is everybody's best guess on, on what, what would be negotiated with, with the selectmen. Any, any other questions or follow-up questions? Did we lose Amy?
She's still there.
I'm here.
Okay.
I, I would, one more comment, Clark, for me. I do want to review this at a point with John, being this is the first time I'm looking at it. I do have some questions that I'd follow him up with, but I would be pro doing this. There might be some tweaks to it as time goes on before they finally negotiate.
Understood. You know, again, again, this is, this is the, an illustration of the types of easements that would be negotiated by the selectmen. And if there's any additional things, considerations from DPW, your team to be incorporated into this diagram at the time of negotiating with the selectmen. Lauren, can you pull up the draft language for the warrant article?
Yes. Can you still see my screen?
I can.
Okay.
And so I don't know if everyone's had a chance to see this. The, the one edit that I was gonna, that I'd suggested earlier was to take out purchase. Was there any discussion with town council on that? The last word on the first line?
Yes, let me pull up the response.
If I could just make a quick comment, Clark.
Yeah, go ahead.
That this easement exhibit that you're referring to is dated May 5th and that has been edited through May 8th. So the easement exhibit that you have is dated May 8th.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, John. Clark, I did forward the request to Attorney North. She said, her suggestion is to keep the broadest possible language in the warrant article, which is why it's drafted this way. You can always narrow it in the motion. We don't know how this project is actually going to shape up either. You never know if the authority might be needed.
Yeah, I just think that the word purchase is problematic for discussion and approval at, at town meeting. I think the town meeting voters would be surprised to see purchase. So I mean, the, the goal is to authorize the Board of Selectmen to acquire by these variety of methods, but the, the, the discussion has always been to allow them to negotiate. And purchase has never been a part of what we've had as a discussion. So I'd like to take it out. Is there any discussion on this? By Planning Board members?
Eminent domain?
Like, we could always do eminent domain, right? I guess. But it would be the town authorizing the Board of Selectmen to do a taking by eminent domain.
And I might have forgotten something. Who owns that property that they're talking about eminent domain, just out of curiosity? I might have missed something. I apologize.
Well, I mean, it's, it's the part of the, part of the property that an easement is being negotiate, it would be negotiated where the, where the, the drains run from Elm Meadows through the tide gates. So that's the area that the town's infrastructure is on. Oh, there was one more question that I had on whether the town has a prescriptive easement to the area where the, the drains are running currently. Currently, since that drain infrastructure has been in place for well over the 20 years for adverse possession. Did you get any answer from council on that, Lauren?
No, I did not, Clark.
Okay. Does everyone understand, does everyone on the Planning Board understand that, that the question is whether there's a prescriptive easement that allows the town to, to continue using that area for the purposes that it is used for now because it's been in place for 20 years? Usually these things get formalized in a land court setting, but certainly this, this authorization for the Board of Selectmen would take the place of that more complicated taking, so to speak. Does anyone have any questions about that? Okay, hearing none, I'd, I'd still like to modify the language to eliminate purchase. Because we have in the language to acquire by gift, taking by eminent domain, or otherwise, otherwise maybe not the best word.
If you're gonna get rid of purchase, you have to get rid of eminent domain then because by eminent domain means you're gonna purchase it.
Yeah. To acquire by mutually agreed to exchange, mutually agreed to exchange, something like that. Lauren, do you have any suggestions?
I had it right now. I'll stop doing that. I, I don't have any specific suggestions. I would be happy to make the change if that's what the Planning Board wants.
If I may, I just want to say there's really standard language that is used in warrant articles. What we could do is you could vote to approve it with the correct language from council.
Vote to approve the warrant language?
With. I know with any of these articles regarding land, that there's a standard language that's utilized by town council. And I know he was working on it. So if you wanted to vote it with a caveat that the language would remove part purchase, but would have the language that's utilized in all the annual town meetings, we could get that for you.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. That, that, that sounds good. Our standard kind of language for, for warrant articles.
Right. It's, they're in there every year.
To see if the town would, you know.
Vote to blah, 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 blah.
Yeah, okay. Does anyone have any questions about that? Paul or Paul, did you have a question?
No, I was just under the impression that eminent domain was a land grab whether you liked it or not.
Right, I, I think, I think you're right about that.
So that's, that, that kind of wording just doesn't really make you feel too good, I'll be honest with you.
I, I know. It's a little, it's a little kind of strong, but you know, purchase on the other side is, is my understanding not the intent of what this easement negotiation would be, would be about.
That would be an agreement between two parties. Wouldn't it?
Right, purchase would. But like, I think somebody came up with it, eminent domain would involve a payment, typically does.
It does. In that case, they're not always happy with that, whether they like it or not, to force them to a decision that they may not want to make. That's what I'm saying about eminent domain. They don't have a choice. They're offered money, but it's just not a word I'm very fond of, I'll be honest with you.
Understood.
I think to Jen's point, though, that that language is pretty standard for every town meeting article in every town there is.
Regarding easement exchanges or in, in a taking?
Because the taking is an. Easements and all that stuff. They just put all the words just in case. It's a just in case thing, like.
It covers you in case something comes up and you don't have to go back to town meeting to add purchase to something. It's, it's basically standardized language that can be cleared up in the motion. I was looking at, I have a town report with me. I was just trying to look for some sample language for you.
Sure, it's just, it's just that purchase was never a part of what I understood was gonna be negotiated with the selectmen.
Right, and I think the, the use of reciprocal and the fact that it's essentially, it's helping each other and it's going to be a negotiation amongst the landowners in the town to come up with easements that would benefit both parties. So.
Shouldn't that be spelled out, Jen?
Yeah.
I, I.
I think, I think that, I think that that language, yeah.
Reciprocal. So reciprocal easements is to me very different than to authorize the selectmen to potentially do a, a taking by eminent domain. I, I don't think that's what we, we're here to vote about. I mean, I, I understand town council has, puts together standard language, but I, I just don't like it. Like, you know, I guess the, like, the way Paul said eminent, eminent domain, it's, it's a little ugly, right? It's a taking. And, and that was never the intent of this reciprocal easement thing. And I know council came up with it, but I, you know, I just, I don't think it makes sense. And I think it's gonna be hard, it's gonna be harder to sell. It's gonna be more confusing, I think, for the selectmen and on the floor town meeting. That's why I don't like, that's why I didn't like purchase. But I think eminent domain is the same, has the same, is the same problem. It's not what was originally discussed as a part of this. So, I mean, motion that modifies that far on end to use the language of reciprocal easements that get negotiated as, and takes out a taking by eminent domain or purchase. John, you know offhand, John Cavanagh, this is a question for you in terms of, of, of these easements being created via a plan and then getting filed at the Registry of Deeds. Ultimately, that's what would be done, right?
That's correct.
And, you know, the, the, the plan itself, if it's an A&R plan for easements, I don't, I don't, I don't think that actually ever comes before the Planning Board for, for an easement.
No, you're not changing property line. You're creating easements on top of each other's property to benefit.
Okay, but it gets filed with the Registry of Deeds, so it lives there for forever. I mean, basically, when you grant an easement, there's no taking that away unless it's mutually agreed to at a future date. And often these things never get, never get changed. They just, the easement just sits there forever. Which is, from a municipal perspective, I think that's fine. I don't think the municipality would have any problem or issue with the easement for their, for their drainage system. Usually it's more, it can be problematic for utilities that never got put in, that goes across private property and they want to get the easement taken out. I think there was something on James Lane. David Big Leo was selling some land and there was some kind of an easement that was there and that we had to go to town meeting in order to have it taken off. It was no big deal, but the pipe never went in place and, but you had to go to town meeting to get, to get rid of it.
Right, and I just want to reiterate what Jason and Jen are getting at from what town council is advising you is that you go to town meeting, it's not a regular episode that the town goes through. So they want to have as much broad language in place to cover that. And I, and I understand your concern about not having the correct words, but I think in this particular instance, you want more words than less words to cover that and it most likely get crafted more finely on the town meeting floor by your town council.
You'd be after we vote to pass it.
Correct.
Well, I mean, typically, we, we prefer to have the final language as a part of what gets put on the warrant.
But you know what it's like at town meeting. Things get edited on the floor.
Sure, the, the, the town manager has his final, final warrant article that get, well, I mean, if we want to vote on it as written and make recommendations that, you know, that the, that the language get tightened up before it goes to the selectmen, then we can, we can cross that bridge when we get to it. If, if we're clear about what the intent is and what we're voting to send to the selectmen, even if it, if it needs, because I think even as is, the word otherwise is kind of, otherwise doesn't seem like it's the right word in place.
So just, so I, I found some language and it's, but like, like Paul is saying and the concern about acquisition because acquisition is essentially what those, that kind of language is stating. What you're doing is you're creating reciprocal easements. Easements on any town land have to go to town meeting, which is why this has to go to town meeting. And I have here an acquisition of property article that said, "To see if the town will vote to appropriate borrow pursuant to any applicable statute or transfer from available funds, the sum or sub money." So they just go on and on to cover either whether it be an acquisition or a swapping of land or the negotiation of easements. I think we could have the board vote to allow Lauren and I to work with council to make it so that it's clean language where it's clear that it's not supposed to have money changing hands. There's supposed to be reciprocal easements to allow each other to maintain the use on either property as they are doing now.
Sounds reasonable to me. Any questions? Does, does someone want to make a motion? That would be either Paul or, or Amy.
So can you tell me what we're allowing to go through? So we're leaving all that language in?
What, we're, we're.
The whole thing.
We're voting to we're voting to have this warrant article modified to have the standard language and made clearer regarding reciprocal easements. In whatever language town council and the town planner think is gonna be most advantageous to the town and work for the developer and get voted on at, on the floor of town meeting as a warrant article. I mean, first, we have to bring it to the selectmen. The selectmen have to be on board with the, the concept and the details. And they, the, the selectmen themselves could modify the warrant language as well.
But why aren't we submitting language to the selectmen that's as tight as we can make it as the planning board?
Because they've asked us to vote on the warrant article draft. And so we have a warrant article draft and I think that it needs some additional attention. It's not in its final form.
Just to weigh a background on town meeting warrants. So what they want you to do is get this language up to the BOS so that it can go on a final warrant and be reviewed by town council. Anything that looks illegal or not in the right way, they will fix. And then in the motions which are mailed out, which are put up, the warrants mailed to everybody. The warrant, the town manager's motions will have much more detail and we can make sure that the language is clean at that point. This is just the first step to get it onto the warrant.
Yeah, so it's a draft warrant article that we're voting on.
I'm still not comfortable with the word eminent domain, Clark.
Okay.
I've seen it before.
All right, well, I mean, I don't know what to say because we've got a, we've got a vote. We've got to vote on it with the understanding that the town planner and council are gonna work on the language between when we vote on it and when the selectmen get to see the language and we talk about this ability to negotiate easements.
So Clark, our ability to make any adjustments will be concluded if we vote on this now. So if the members of the Planning Board dislike the language as configured, what is an, an option to get language that feels more solid and less amenable to a future decision that we will have nothing to say about?
Well, we could have another Zoom meeting in a couple of days and give a couple of days to Lauren and, and town council to, to review. Jen, do you know when the next selectmen meeting is?
Clark, it's Lauren. It's tomorrow night. Sorry. I just wanted to speak a bit to timing here that if the board were to vote on this tonight, it was made clear to myself from the town manager's office that the Board of Selectmen wanted the Planning Board to vote on the language and to be comfortable with language. And that we're on a short timeline here. The advisory committee before the warrant closes is on Wednesday. The planning, the last Board of Selectmen meeting is the closing of the warrant date, which is May 19th. Just to, to key to these timelines.
On a project of this magnitude.
I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
It's kind of a rush job on a project of this scope.
No, I wouldn't suggest that there's a rush. The, the, the question here is, does the Planning Board wish to, to pursue this and request to the Board of Selectmen that they take this motion in advance to allow the Board of Selectmen to, in the future, negotiate these easements by granting it at this annual town meeting? The other alternate path is if we're not comfortable with this and if the Planning Board does not wish to pursue this after the Planning Board special permit. after the planning board special permit and site plan review process, when you have specifics, the alternate would be then to go back to town meeting to procure easements then, once you have the specifics. The, the intent here was to allow this to happen in advance, but that, those are your options.
But we, we weren't going to be going before the selectmen tomorrow with this. If we voted on it tonight, we're not going to vote, we're not going to go before the selectmen. But we were going to go, uh, before advisory on Wednesday.
Correct.
So it would be good to have the final language, right?
Right, but I'm, I'm misunderstanding what your question is.
I guess, I guess the thing is, um, I, I'm not comfortable with the language that we have written. John Cavanaro said, well, you know, you, you want to have all the options that are available. But again, that wasn't the intent of, the intent of, of this warrant article is to negotiate, not, not to purchase or do a taking. And both of those options were put in by council. And, you know, like, like, I think Paul's sort of hinting at that the taking option of eminent domain is, is not what, not what reciprocal easements, um, was, was, um, was trying to, uh, uh, provide the option for the selectmen. So, I don't know, I, it seems like if we modify the language to take out, uh, purchase, um, and, um, eminent domain and change otherwise to, um, you know, other available, um, to, to, or to negotiate, that may get a, a unanimous vote from the planning board. May not, I don't, I don't know, but it's, it seems like, you know, um, Paul Grady doesn't, doesn't like the eminent domain language and I don't like the purchase language in, in the draft article. So if we could modify it, uh, and vote on those modifications to the draft, um, then I'd say, you know, we might actually have something to take, um, to advisory. But I, I don't, I don't, I think that, you know, saying, oh, we're going to change the language of the, of the warrant article anyway, because it's not in a form, as Jen points out, not in the form that is typically goes before town meeting. Yeah, that modification.
Clark?
Yeah, go ahead. What, what's that?
Real quick, rather than put all these options in place, which, again, I think the Town Council, I can't speak for them, they're trying to be as broad as possible, but maybe a broad sentence that you're more comfortable with, such as, um, to acquire through the Board of Selectmen by, uh, via negotiation of mutually satisfactory easements between parties or something, getting, getting to your point of.
Yeah, I think, I think taking all that out. Who, whose language is this? Who did this?
I did, it's my screen.
All right, Lauren, way to go.
You have to
I think to acquire
That's what they're going to do, gift it to you.
To acquire easements.
Mutually satisfactory to both parties or something.
I think that, that, that describes the intent of what we've been talking about all, all along. And, you know, this gift purchase and eminent domain stuff and otherwise doesn't even, doesn't seem like the right word.
So to acquire easements for any or all the following purposes through mutually agreeable terms or something to that.
I think just to acquire easements, you know, whether it's, I mean, do we have to say it's mutually agreeable? It, ultimately, they, they'd have to be, but it's going to be a negotiation, so to acquire easements covers it, doesn't it?
Require by gift, because it has to be by something. If you don't put acquire easements, they can pay for them still. You didn't define. Hey, what, I'm sorry, I didn't hear what you said. You have to put by gift, because otherwise you're leaving it open that they could still purchase it. If you say to acquire easements, it didn't say not to pay for them. So you want to say to acquire easements by gift, because that's the only way you can get them without paying for them is by gift. Could I ask you a question? Yep. Well, I'm sure that they're going to get paid for them. It's like the mutual, it's like the eminent domain. You've made an offer, but to a degree, you're forced to accept, so I don't know by gift. I think what Clark said was spot on, by mutually agreeable terms by both, from both parties. I thought the idea is we're giving them an easement, they're giving us an easement, there's no cash. That's mutually agreeable, but like negotiations mutually agreed to, doesn't mean cash.
Or, or you could change, um, if you, if to exchange easements instead of to acquire and/or exchange easements for any of the following purposes.
Clark, I think the mutually agreeable was quite a nice line that you put in.
Right.
Terms.
You know, to acquire as mutually agreed, comma, easements for any of the following purposes.
Terms that are mutually agreed to by both parties, be it gift, be it exchange, however. Just the other, gives the other party way too much leeway.
All right, so, uh, I think that what Lawrence typed up here, um, reasonably modifies this language so that it could be in its final form with the possible exception of the standard warrant language that, um, goes on the front end. But, but all of the intent in terms of, uh, going before advisory and going for the Board of Selectmen to get this as a final, uh, warrant article. Um, I think this, that what Lawrence, um, put in here, uh, seems like a reasonable, um, approach. Does anyone have any questions about this?
No.
Amy?
No, I do not.
Clark, I do. One more. Would you add to, by both parties, usually agreed by both parties? That's what I would think. Terms usually agreed to.
Okay. Okay, anyone else? Any final comments? Lauren, Jen, Jason, John?
My, my only, I just want to confirm that what I've had typed here is what everybody wants. Been a couple of things thrown out, so I just want to confirm.
It looks fine to me, um.
So you want to say mutually agreed to by both parties, so you're missing a two after agreed.
What about terms, Amy? It's a terms.
That's fine, I mean, uh.
You have to have terms in it.
One is, yeah.
Usually agreed to by both parties. So after you're acquired.
Terms.
Terms would be, no, I think terms would go agreed to terms by, comma, by both parties.
I go, yeah. Or mutually agreed terms, however you want to put it.
All right, let's just get them.
Just get rid of two. All right, you saved a word, even though it's a two-letter word. Okay, um, because, does someone want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we accept the language in this article draft as written to enable us to.
I'm sorry, Amy, we're, we're voting to recommend this draft warrant.
I know that, I was going to get to that.
Okay.
So, um, so we can basically pass this to the selectmen for their consideration, right?
Right, for, uh, uh, inclusion in the warrant.
Thank you. I, I did have it written down, but I didn't get a chance to say it.
All right, that's good. Did we lose Paul Caleri?
No, Paul Caleri is here. I think you lost Brian.
Okay, all right, all right. Um, I didn't see your, your little picture. Paul, I'm going to ask you to vote on this since, uh, we're, uh, several members short.
Okay.
Thank you. Uh, all, all in favor? I would say I have a motion to, can I get a second? Can I get a second to the motion?
Paul Caleri will second it.
Okay, thank you. Is there any further discussion? Okay, then all in favor, uh, vote aye, uh, one at a time. Clark Brewer votes aye.
Amy Glassmeyer votes aye.
Paul Grady votes aye.
Paul Caleri votes aye.
Okay, great, thank you. Lauren, do you have anything else that we need to, uh, close this one out?
That is all for now.
Okay, next item on the agenda is.
Thank you very much. Do you mind if I?
Thanks, guys.
Thank you, John and Jason.
Thanks, Jason.
Thank you.
Have a good night. Um, the next item on the agenda is recommendations on the Cohasset Municipal Harbor Plan dated March 2020 draft. Lauren, can you get us, um, can you give us a primer on this?
I sure can. I have a little PowerPoint for you, so while my screen shares up. If I can find it.
Don't you have a 6:30 meeting?
I do have a 6:30 meeting, yes.
Still have time, we're gonna, we're not going to rush through the agenda. Well, you should still make it.
It's a very brief PowerPoint.
Yep.
All right. Can you see it?
Yes.
Can you see the people in front of it, or is that just on my screen?
I can see the people in front of it.
All right, there we go.
You can move the people.
Okay, we're good?
I moved people.
All right, everybody, so this is an update on the Cohasset Municipal Harbor Plan, the latest status. I'm just going to review a couple of things. The latest draft of the plan is the March 2020 version, which is available on the Town of Cohasset website under the Harbor Committee. The process to date, this all started when the Town of Cohasset was awarded recipient of the Seaport Economic Council grant. The town has given $80,000 from SEC and there was a $20,000 town match. There is an RFP process conducted to select a harbor planning consultant, and that is Harriman Consultants, particularly been working with Emily Anis over the past several years on this. This initiative was led with the Town Planning Director, um, my predecessor before I was here. The Harbor Committee has been working very closely and along with the consultants. And there's been various iterations of the plans, uh, across 2018 into early 2020. Um, I believe that the March 2020 version, if I am correct, is either the sixth or the seventh version, um, that was reviewed by the committee. And the Harbor Committee voted to approve this version of the Harbor Plan on March 10th, 2020. So what's in the plan, this is just really taken from the table of contents. It goes over an overview of the general planning area that is Cohasset Harbor. And it discusses lots of recommendations and visions and goals relative to harbor governance, relative to the water sheet, rather with the edges, and it really takes a look at the long-term viability of the harbor in terms of economic development, internal sustainability and environmental wellness. And it provides a series of recommendations similar to that of the master plan, as we're all familiar with, that, um, you know, there's an implementation strategy and goals and identified tasks that we can do to meet the goals of the harbor. The, I will point out that this is, um, it's, it's not a, a binding document. It's really intended to be a planning document for visioning and, and set goals and strategies. But what I will point out is there's been a, a bit of discussion that we've had at our planning board level about the Chapter 91 amplifications portion of the plan. To take a step back and remind us, Chapter 91 is the Public Waterfront Act. It's relative to waterfront permitting and filled tidelands, things of that nature. It is a state process, um, controlled through the Department of Environmental Protection and Coastal Zone Management. And one of the way, the only way to modify what would typically be state Chapter 91 regulations when it comes to waterfront permitting is through a municipally approved local harbor plan that is also approved at state level. So in our harbor plan, we have two, as they're termed, amplifications in the plan. These are relative to the building height and the setback from the project shoreline to a, to a structure. And what these amplifications propose are more stringent regulations than what would typically be allowed under state regulations. And the intent of these is to comply with the Cohasset Harbor Village Business overlay district that the board approved. We've discussed this and, and there's been votes taken in the past, but I did just want to flag where this ended up from our last discussion.
That's good.
The next steps in the approval process, um, now that it's been approved by the Harbor Plan and its current Harbor Committee and its current, uh, its current state, there's a planning board recommendation. This is requested by the Board of Selectmen. It's not formally a step included in our notice to proceed, but as I mentioned, the chair has requested that the planning board issue a recommendation before it gets to the Board of Selectmen. So once the planning board has issued that, eh, we would schedule the final public hearing with the Board of Selectmen. And then once our vote was taken there, if it was approved, we would submit to the state agencies to initiate the state approval process. Um, I will also note that we had been hoping to have, um, these additional steps complete already. As I mentioned, March 10th was when the Harbor Committee approved this and the planning board was due to talk about this on March 18th. But in light of the coronavirus pandemic, things have gotten put on pause for a bit. So we're looking to just regain the momentum that we had at the end of that process.
Okay, hey, thank you, Lauren. Is there anything, is there any reason why we wouldn't recommend this? I, I mean, I, I took another look at it and, you know, all the, all the recommendations with the, you know, possible exception of, um, uh, some of the parking options, uh, uh, are, I think, all reasonable and, and good. Is there any reason not, for the planning board not to recommend this, or is?
I, I would say no. I mean, this, this is a, a document intended to provide for long-term planning. It, there's, it, you know, coordinates the master plan and it's aimed at making a more vibrant harbor. So, and as I mentioned, there are, there's nothing in the plan that, even though there's an implementation goals and strategies, there's nothing that binds you to, you know, to accomplish those things. It's just suggestions and it's meant to be a visioning document.
Right, one recommendation or another, that don't, they don't take priority necessarily, but they are articulated in the, in the, and there are grant, um, things that, uh, grant, um, uh, detail that are available, um, at the end of the plan.
Correct.
Uh, is there any questions from the other planning board members?
This is where we should be, is that correct? That is, after all that's, is said and done, this is the next stage that we should be, um, at and make approval.
Yes, we are, we are resuming where we meant to be on March 18th.
Yeah, like two months ago, okay. So, um, Paul, do you have any questions? Paul Grady?
No, not on that. I want to read the governance a little more thoroughly, but I'll go along with this.
Right. Um, Paul Caleri, do you have any, any questions on this?
Nope, long time coming.
All right, then, um, why don't we, uh, why don't we take a, uh, take a vote? I'll, I'll, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion raised.
A second?
A second.
All in favor of, uh, recommending the Cohasset Har, Municipal Harbor Plan to the, to the selectmen for review and vote?
Aye.
Clark Brewer says aye.
Amy Glassmeyer says aye.
Paul Caleri says aye.
And Paul Grady, you said aye?
I did.
Okay, thank you. Next item on the agenda is the Housing Production Plan Status. Lauren, do you want to give us the?
Yes, the Housing, yes, I certainly will. The Housing Production Plan, at our last discussion, I can't recall if it had already been approved by the Housing Steering Committee or not yet, but at this point, the Affordable Housing Steering Committee has approved the final draft of the Housing Production Plan. The next step in this process, um, was, we were due to have a joint public meeting of the Board of Selectmen and the Planning Board for local adoption. And again, that had been scheduled for March 31st, so we're now looking to reschedule that. Again, it will be a joint meeting. Um, I believe what, we are actually proposing to discuss this at the planning board meeting on June 3rd. Um, we would invite the Board of Selectmen to attend the first portion of the meeting and have a joint session. And at that point, after that adoption was concluded, we could then resume regular planning or activity.
Okay, that's, that sounds great. Can you, um, can you send out a link for the, um, uh, for the, for the, the report and at, at the time it would be most appropriate for that June 3rd, 3rd meeting?
Absolutely, I'd be happy to do that. I will send, I will send along, um, the report itself is, uh, is a bit dense. It's, you know, a lengthy planning document, but there's also an executive summary that's very helpful. So I'll send both of those along. Um, I'll send those out tomorrow so you can start to pick it, pick away at those and I'll, and I'll send them again as we get closer.
Okay, are there any, are there any surprises? Because I haven't looked at it recently, but are there any surprises to you, um, in, um, the plan?
Um, no, I wouldn't say that there's been surprises. I mean, there's, there's been a lot of discussion about this. Things I will flag is that there are, there are, uh, areas in town, any housing production plan does need to designate locations that would be appropriate and suitable for housing development. So there are some, um, some areas are listed by specifics of street address. For example, 808 Jerusalem Road is a For example, 808 Jerusalem Road is a parcel that's been discussed. And then there's other areas that are just designated in terms of general area. For example, you know, along the Route 31 corridor was one of the areas that can be deemed suitable. Um, again, this is, this is a document that gets submitted to a state agency. Um, and this is the document that will assist us in getting to our 10% on the subsidized housing inventory of affordable housing. We are projecting that with the 2020 census that we will fall below the 10% level that we had maintained for a while. And what production plan can allow us to do is that if we get a housing production plan approved by the state and we make meaningful progress on the plan in terms of percentages, that we can then seek certification of the plan that would provide a temporary safe harbor, um, even if we weren't at that 10% yet. So it's a, it's a very important document and it's important that we, you know, get this moving as it's, it's been a goal. It's been identified by many of the, of the agents in town.
Okay, so it can protect us from Avalon size, um, developments if we, you know, if we get these 20 units as like an interim measure at, uh, the Stop and Shop Plaza. We can be projected from the 200 units that somebody wants to build wherever.
Mm-hmm, right.
Okay.
Lauren, how much are we supposed to fall below the 10%?
I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
How much are we supposed to fall below the 10% according to census? Or what are they estimating?
We are projecting to be approximately 30 units below, but it would be, you know, we'll be in the 9% range. So we won't be significantly far behind, but, um, you know, we're a small town. So, you know, we're looking at our housing stock every, everything counts. So, and to think about all of the development that's occurred since the last census, um, you know, in 2010, there's been a lot more housing stock added, so.
30 units. All right. Any other questions for Lauren? Okay, um, a final item on the, on the agenda is a discussion on the inclusionary zoning payment in lieu of units. Lauren, what's the latest on that?
Yes, I just wanted to revisit this and bring it back up again. This is something that we discussed, but there was never a decision made. And at the last time we spoke about this, our inclusionary zoning bylaw is very big. It's not, doesn't have specifics as to how you would calculate the payment in lieu. It's really up to, um, you know, the planning board's decision. And something that, you know, has been flagged and that I've thought about for a while is that in terms of, you know, having development come to town. Um, you know, it really, it doesn't add, it's, it's an uneasy part of the permitting process because in terms of forecasting and development analysis, it's, you know, a big question mark as to what that would be. Um, something that the board, um, really needs to, to think about is how do we want to shape this policy? Because as I went over one of our last meetings, it was, you know, there's so many ways to calculate this number. And then at the end of the day, it's also, do you want to incentivize creation of units or do you want to incentivize, um, you know, payments into the Affordable Housing Trust? And these are things to consider. There are, sorry.
When we changed that inclusionary zoning language in, um, uh, several years ago, uh, at the last minute, the planning board went along with a motion that, that basically said we want developers to create affordable units as a part of their developments top priority. That's, that would be the priority, um, for the planning board. But we have this other option and I, I think it's going to make sense to put this on the agenda again with, um, uh, some, some versions of what the calculation is. And my, my recollection is we took the language from Wellesley on how they, uh, put together their calculation. But, you know, that might've gotten changed and in a way that, um, um, has, um, has made it more confusing than necessary. Uh, but I, you know, I'd say, um, uh, why don't you put together the, the calculation that, that you think makes the most sense? And, and in several different ways so that we can have a robust discussion on, on what is reasonable and fair on to the town and the intent of the, um, changed language as well as, um, is likely to produce the most value for, uh, creating more affordable housing in Cohasset.
I, yes, I'd be happy to, um, you know, get a sense of, give, bring back some more options. And I did just want to flag this for your attention again, so you could start thinking about this and, um, you know, just again, start thinking about how, how we want our policy, whether it's creation of units, whether it's maximizing the dollar value that we get for a, a payment in lieu of a provision. Just to start to think about these concepts that the next time we have this discussion, you know, we can get a sense. Um, because as I mentioned, it, it is something that, um, would be nice to clean up and, and for our permitting processes. And as well as, um, it was also raised recently by the Affordable Housing Trustees. They noted that, that it would be nice to have a prescriptive.
A real, a real discreet number. I mean, I could see, you know, if somebody's doing a, a development of single-family houses, then the single-family affordable number is going to be different than a condo or apartment type of number. So it, you know, I could see there being several different numbers.
Right.
Um, available that, you know, let's face it, a lot of developers, they don't want to do, um, mixed income developments for their own marketing purposes, even though, you know, the, the, the whole point is 80% of median income is, it, it should be no big deal for everybody.
When, um, this is Amy. Uh, can, when we, Lauren, when you come back to us, can you provide some insight about, uh, use of language? So when we use affordable, I work in Brockton and when we say that word, people come unglued. And that's because actually from the standpoint of their housing supply, they have a very large amount of affordable housing. And they, in the past, experienced a situation in which because they had surplus housing, the city of Boston and other cities around the Boston metropolitan area encouraged people that were, um, of low income to, to reside in Brockton. I'm an advocate for affordable housing. I'm just telling a story. Um, the bottom line is that by using language, uh, like affordable, it, it conjures up ideas in people's minds. And can we, can we look at, if you're going to be looking at examples of how to achieve an objective, would you also pay attention to language? Because I'm interested in, um, understanding whether people are starting to use a term like workforce housing rather than just affordable? Because, you know, in our town, what's an affordable house? $800,000, $700,000? You know, it's like, it, it doesn't, it honestly doesn't mean anything. It does have a technical meaning. But if our objective is, is to allow people to be able to afford to live in, in, uh, Cohasset, is that word actually reflective of what we're looking for?
But that's, that's probably more, um, in the, the Housing Production Plan, um, issue rather than this inclusionary zoning. Cause inclusionary zoning is, is just a, a feature of our, our zoning bylaw.
Okay, I, I hear you. I'm bringing it up in the wrong place. That's fine.
I mean, it's still related to affordable housing. It, it's just, um, the intent of inclusionary is to keep up with our 40B requirement.
Correct.
So that larger developers, um, have to share in that burden. Or developments. Um, did you have anything to add, Lauren?
No, um, but I was, I'm happy to look into this some more. I do know that, um, as you mentioned, you know, we're keeping up the 40B requirements. The affordable is categorized at 80% area median income, whereas typically the workforce housing is, um, you know, can be up to 100 to 110% of AMI. Uh, so they are coined terms, but I, I know exactly what Amy's talking about. I mean, even what's, you know, considered an affordable unit for the statute, it could not, you know, maybe it's not really actually affordable, you know, in terms of how it's interpreted. But it is, um, you know, a term of art for the purpose of the housing production, you know, in terms of the 10% that it's affordable at 80% of the area median income.
Right. Uh, low income housing is 50% of, uh, median income.
Right, right. So there's, there's terms associated with each of those, but, no, but I, this is, um, I'd be happy to look into more of this and, and bring this back for our future, you know, a more in-depth discussion on this. I just wanted to flag it for you this evening.
All right, since we have 24 minutes before Lauren has to go, I, I, I'm desperately in need of a background like Amy's. I don't, I don't know this.
It's very easy to get one.
Visual chaos here.
All you have to do is go to where your stop video is.
Yeah.
It says choose virtual background.
Okay, thank you.
But then you have to load some photographs on your computer and then all you do is go choose your virtual background. So.
All right. Oh, thank you. Thank you. I'll do that. Uh, is that that African American museum?
It is.
Washington DC?
It is.
All right.
Oh, but let me show you who I have my newest, my newest participation. My community of friends.
Those are Teletubbies, right?
Those are Teletubbies. That is correct.
All right. Okay. Wow. All right, that, hey, thanks, Amy.
Oh my goodness. I need a picture of that.
You, you are.
That's exactly what my students said, but they didn't use goodness as the term.
They, um, right, well, we're, we try not to use expletives here on the planning board.
So if we close the meeting, then Lauren might actually get to have some dinner before she goes to her next meeting.
That's right.
Um, before we close, um, again, Lauren, when is our next, uh, meeting?
Our next meeting is May 20th. Um, thank you for bringing that up. We have a May 20th. Followed by June 3rd and, um, I'll send out more information for you. But I also just wanted to quickly note, uh, thank you all very much for your time and making yourselves available this evening as this wasn't previously in our scheduled list.
Thank you, Lauren. A motion to adjourn?
You know, what time are the regular meetings? Seven, right?
Yeah.
These aren't bad meetings because I have to go back into Boston right now, but that, these aren't bad meetings. If we do these time while we're doing these bloody Zoom meetings.
You, you're saying five o'clock is good?
Yeah, cause I come home, I get home, see my daughter for a few minutes and I usually head back out. So.
Yeah.
It's not a bad thing for me.
You need a helicopter.
All right.
Anyway, but I don't want to.
That, that's good to know. I mean, I, I'm, I'm flexible. I think we do seven because we think that the public can participate then more readily than during the workday.
No, I was to talk about these Zoom meetings.
Yeah.
These, these are.
It's all right with me to do them earlier. Uh, does someone want to make a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Second?
Aye.
Aye.
Amy.
Okay, Clark says aye.